Gotcha, thank you. I'd like to call this meeting to order, a special meeting in the Board of Education for the Extracurricular Committee. As I mentioned before, but just for the record, President Ratliff is detained in Columbus. He's going to get here as soon as he can, but we're going to start the meeting without him. That makes roll call very simple, so I'd say that's pretty much done. And the first item on the agenda is the extracurricular update. Madam Superintendent?
Who wants to go first today? Middle school?
Sure, sounds great.
So we'll have Jill give an update and then have Sean give an update for high school.
All right, so this spring, we had about 96 athletes complete the spring season, which consists of about 16 baseball players, 22 softball players, and 24 girl track athletes and 34 boys track participants. And so those were large numbers for us compared to previous years. The baseball team, they got to travel to a few away games. We played mostly up at Lincoln Park, but they did travel to a few away games, which was a great experience for them. Had success. Seems like most all the time that they were playing, so it was a very good experience for baseball. Softball, they are improving by far. They had three coaches that they literally made a practice every day, it rained out. So they really worked well together. And that was a strong point of my spring season was that all my coaches had experience this year, so it was like whenever you can get coaches that are in the building, teachers and have experience, it just seems to run a lot smoother. Their parents seem to be a lot happier because it seems to be, you know, a little more higher functioning just with the people that are in the building and around the kids constantly kind of stay on them and those kinds of things. Track, you know, we had a lot of success with our boys teams. The relays were winning almost every meet they went to. And the girls, I think placed third in the Marion County meet. The boys were third in MOAC this year. So those are all pretty successful for us at the middle school level. I did want to, like, and we talked one time earlier about the sanctioning of the teams, so I did want to kind of like resurface that and just kind of make sure we're not putting that totally on the back burner. I will say this, I'm kind of like always hearing that we should get rid of it, but I did talk to a couple of parents who chose not to have their kids play due to the sanctioning issue, and they said they will absolutely next year play because they realized that they were missing all the practices and all, you know, if they missed a weekend or two, that didn't compare to like the two months that they would have had with the Grant Middle School team. So it was like a different perspective from parents that were, you know, chose not to play due to that reason. So some pros and cons in regards to the sanctioning of teams. I know Sean talked about soccer, that involves soccer as well, so that's something that we should, you know, eventually, I know we have a lot on our plate right now, but I think it's something we should continue to talk about in the future till.
Can you just refresh this, I have it in the notes, like which sports we're looking at that it impacts?
It would impact baseball and softball and then soccer at the middle school.
I also, let's jump back in there. So with the grant booster, we did, along with me, we took our student athletes out to Cooper's to celebrate, just if they were on the honor roll or merit roll all year long. We went out to Cooper's and had a bowling and lunch and those kinds of things, which the kids all seemed to like. And then last week, we brought back the eighth grade all sports athletic awards, it would honor the athletes that participated that were just eighth graders. So we did those two things just in the past month to help celebrate our athletes and their achievements, both in the classroom as well as just kind of being active in the school.
Okay, and you said participation rates are way up for Grant, especially for the spring sports. Are we attributing that to anything specific?
I would say the seventh grade class just has large numbers, so I feel like just from previous year's experience, it seems like one class seems to be stronger than the next year weaker, and it kind of ebbs and flows a little bit that way. But I believe recently, our numbers at Grant in general just have been higher. So I, you know, I think a lot of, I heard there were some transfers in our sixth grade group, but I think our fifth grade come in is pretty large as well, so again, it's like every other year.
So it might be just as simple as larger class, higher participation rates?
Right, right. But, I mean, we have some good competition coming in there too, so it's good, you know, anytime we can get our numbers, it just kind of helps a lot of things, so.
Okay. Any other questions for the Grant Extracurricular?
High school?
Yeah.
I'm kind of after some of the same things as Jill at the high school level. We have about 140 kids participating in spring sports this year. I know we had 21 tennis players, which was, that's about as many as we can handle with the courts we have over there. But that gives us a full varsity, a full JV and a full freshman squad for tennis, which was, which was great. Dustin really worked hard with me in securing a whole, a whole separate JV schedule. We had multiple days where varsity would play one place and JV played somewhere else. So we've got a lot of opportunities for those younger kids. And Coach Ramsey, 28 baseball players, 24 softball players, and then the rest would have been track and field throughout the season. For the year, that puts us over 540, if we put all the seasons together, which is about as high as it's ever been relative to the student body population at Harding, which is, which is great. And it was a smaller senior class, obviously this year, so participation numbers are good percentage wise. I know we've got some ideas, Jill and I, and things we've talked about in terms of as we head into the future here, trying to get those even up even more. I think a lot of it goes to training of younger kids at younger age, making sure they understand there's opportunities beyond the school hours, not just sports, but music, art, educational activities and that sort of thing. So encouraged by the numbers as they continue to go up over the years especially. I think we're back on track fully with the COVID interruption. You know, we suffered through that a little bit, but we're back up and rolling even above where we were before COVID at this point. So that's kind of the participation spiel. It was a real rainy spring this year for us. And having said that, again, tennis team played every single match somehow, some way, including all the JV matches. Baseball played 25 out of 28 possible. Softball is a little, a little less than that, 21 out of 28 possible. And then track did have a couple of, a couple of meets canceled early in the season, but everybody finished up pretty strongly here in the last week. We had a couple of highlights. Our boys doubles tennis team of Alexander and Sebastian Leshetsky won a match at district. First time we've had boys win at districts since 2007, and that was Northwest, and that was Nick Lescaris. And then prior to that, in the Central, the last time we were in the Central, the last person to win at districts was 2001, and that was Ryan Valentine. Ryan also went to State, so great accomplishment for those guys, it was a lot of fun to watch those guys play this season. And then just this past Saturday, had a couple pretty longstanding track records broken. The boys 3200 meter record was broken, which was held by Tony Orstina since 1999. And if you've been around Marion for any period of time, Tony Orstina is kind of a, I don't know, I look at him as a legendary, called hero kind of guy. So to have that record broken was a big deal. Carter Ferguson broke that, 938. And then the 1600 also, broken Saturday, in a time of 510, previously held by Taylor McCurdy, who just like Tony, is in the Hall of Fame here, and also a longstanding record from 2007. So pretty exciting. Lydia Price broke the 1600 meter record. Lydia also finished third in both, the 1600 and 3200, so she'll qualify for both at regionals this coming week at Pickerington. I don't know if she's going to run both, I think that's always the dilemma with distance runners, if they're going to try to do both of those on the same day as they get further and further down the road, but I am not privy to that strategic conversation. So we'll see what happens this weekend, but she's been pulling it off so far. She won both at the MOAC as well. So we'll have five MOAC first teamers coming up here first week of June at the banquet. We did also have our 74th Marion Night Invite, had 16 girls teams and 14 boys teams, that's as many as we've had since, since, geez, before this school was built, I'm trying to think. So we narrowed it down, I know we moved out here, and then we rebuilt the track, and the numbers were low, we've been building them back up. So a lot of people, it was a fairly long meet. That night somehow we avoided the rain and had a really great night. Next year, obviously, the 75th, be a milestone event, definitely one of the longest standing and more prestigious track meets, not just in central Ohio, but throughout the state, so something we're really proud of. And I don't know if this is extracurriculars, but I do want to kind of make a mention of Mr. Fagan and Ms. White amongst a whole bunch of others. And Mr. Mullins had his crew out there filming on Friday. We brought back the United Service Day. I was just really privileged and pleased to be a part of that. Those guys did a great job of organizing it, ton of work done here at Harding, and I think that's a big deal as far as building pride and having kids take ownership and really caring about where they go to school. And I think that's a really great thing that they brought that back, and it was just a real honor to be a part of that. Kids did a lot of great work.
Okay, just some follow-up questions. When was the last time we had United Service Day then?
I think in full, the last time was pre-COVID, 2019. I feel like we might have done something abbreviated somewhere between now and then, but that as far as full on, you know, whole school, you know, all three grades, freshman, sophomore, because we do it after the seniors leave, but I think it was 19.
And going throughout the community too? I know a lot of work gets done.
We didn't do too much of that this time, just because they're bringing it back. But I really think that was okay too, because again, we did a lot around here, and I think the kids, we got a lot more bang for our bucks, we didn't have as much downtime, you know, waiting on transportation, moving us throughout town, not that, I think there's, that's important too, to get out in the community, but given what, what we had to work with, that was, they did a great job.
So slowly but surely bringing that back to what it was, that was such a great.
That's my interpretation. Mr. Fagan gave you all the intricate details, but yeah.
All right, and you mentioned next year will be the 75th Marion Night Relay, correct? Are there any plans going forth to really promote that? Is there anything you need from us to?
Fireworks. I'm kidding.
Well, I was about to say, that'll resurface on its own perhaps.
All right, I shouldn't joke.
But is there, are we talking about, is there?
I talked to people about putting like, doing some kind of a logo, you know, special like logo for that event. You know, I think just a little more publicity, you know, around, around town.
We have some generation relays perhaps or something?
You have some pulled hamstrings, perhaps, I mean, you know. No, it might be fun to, it'd be fun to bring some people back from the past, to kind of be honorary starters or something along that line.
Absolutely.
I was just kind of looking through Baum's page and some other sources, and they're just, I mean, I know Mee Hawk, I think was, that's the meet over in Mansfield, I think they were on 92nd this year, and that's obviously a well-known event for track folks around. But I, there's not a lot out there above, certainly 92, but 75, I mean, it goes back to obviously 1950, so.
Okay, no, that'd be great. If there's something we can do to help, let us know, that, yeah, more publicity and get more alumni involved, that'd be a neat night, so, okay. My last question concerning the information that was brought up, and it, obviously a very rainy season, and that's what we live with every spring, transportation issues, how did it go?
It was up and down, but you know, it's, you know, I think we've kind of learned to be flexible as much as possible, so, you know, like you said, it's up and down from week to week.
Can we make it in terms of better than last year, same as last year, improvements to be made in terms of what we can do to? I know there's efforts being made right now in terms of recruiting more bus drivers and everything else like that, but?
Yeah, I'd say, I'd say roughly the same.
That's where it was too, yeah.
Gotcha, honest assessment then, thank you. Okay, and then, and I don't know how much of this we can get into due to the personnel nature of it, and as Jill mentioned, you know, we've got a lot on our plate in terms of extracurricular and where we want to be heading. Are we able to get an update in terms of where that stands right now? I know that the?
The posting, is that?
Job descriptions.
Do you know when the posting comes down for the extracurricular positions?
I think it's, it should be sent in.
Do you have anything else to add to that then, Julie, in terms of where we are with that, or just for an update?
There have been what I would call positive applicants, and that's a pretty good number. I think that we'll be able to choose from as far as experience and desire of working in the district, and then that, but you can also optimistic that we're going to try to call again.
So filling the leadership roles is our next step as far as the extracurricular department is concerned then? Okay, gotcha.
And I would just add too, we're in communication with MBA about a couple of MOUs around extracurriculars, so just about the way that the elementary coordinators were written into the MBA contract, obviously before we would have this position. So we're currently working on an MOU. And then the other piece of that is, we now have some additional clubs, extracurricular activities such as FAA, our Future Famers of Ameri-, FFA, DECA, we now have e-sports, but we don't, it's not in their contract right now because obviously we didn't have those things. So we're actually working on what those MOUs look like. So once we get those to agreement, we'll be bringing them to the board for approval.
Okay, sounds good then. Okay, anything else for extracurriculars?
Just point out, the track was repainted, looks great, so thanks Jake for getting that coordinated, and we got the turf reconditioned last Thursday as well.
Okay.
Got to jump on a couple of summer projects.
I was about to say, all right, sounds good, even with all the rain. Okay. All righty. I will motion to adjourn this meeting at 5:49, and I will second that, and there we go. All right, thank you very much, everybody. We do have a Policy and Personnel Committee meeting that we will start at 6:00 PM. Thank you. Okay, it's now 6 o'clock. I'd like to officially welcome you to the special meeting for the Board of Education for Marion City Schools for the Policy and Personnel Committee. Again, roll call, I'm here, and agenda items, including a lot of policies that will later, I believe, be a first reading tonight, correct? Okay. And Madam Superintendent, I'll turn it over to you for letter A, Policy 2623, Student Assessment and Academic Intervention Services.
Thank you, Mr. Wiley. So we had our meeting with Neola, you know, we have periodic updates with them, so all of these that are coming forward tonight are from the last meeting that we had. Many of them are due to changes in House Bill 33. So the first policy we have on here is for student assessment and academic intervention services. As part of House Bill 33, there is now a requirement that districts send home assessment scores from the state test by June 30th. So we can either do that via email or via mail, but that was not in the previous policy. So basically, the addition is there. There's also, as we stated before, when the name of Ohio Department of Education changed over to Ohio Department of Education and Workforce, that as we updated policies, they would start to change the name back. So you'll see that, you'll see there's Chancellor of Higher Education, like some of that is just language. So in Marion City, obviously the law is already in effect, so our families actually can see the OST scores once they're loaded into Power School if their parents have a parent portal set up, but we also will make sure that parents have access to those test scores.
So we don't foresee that being any issue?
No.
And then also, I saw that it does, I don't know if it's redefining or officially defining end of course exams and state mandated assessments, is there anything that, that was highlighted in green? I don't know if there's anything we need to be concerned with?
No, they just changed the language, so it's, they are no longer those Ohio graduation tests, they're the end of course exams, and then I think they just aligned it to the new language that explains what they are. And they're, they changed the statewide, the state mandated assessments. A lot of it is just language, content is pretty much the same.
Gotcha.
The next policy is Policy 3120.04, this is the employment of substitutes. As you know, the regulations around substitutes have changed a lot over the past few years with COVID. This is also just a minor change that we have to put into our policy, that substitutes must possess either a valid Ohio professional license, a substitute teaching license, or they can get a pre-service teaching permit to serve as a substitute. So this allows us to have substitute teachers on a semester to semester basis, but we would need to confirm, you know, what college or university those students are attending in order for them to get paid. So they would send their transcripts with HR and they would double check that. So we had to add in the pre-service teaching permit.
That's what I was just, so the pre-service teaching permit for the sake of the public, that's the newest stipulation that we need to follow, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
The next policy is Policy 3140, this is termination and resignation. Also in House Bill 33, it permits districts to now provide notice of termination by regular mail with a certificate of mailing, electronic mail with proof of delivery, or another method with proof of, proof of delivery. So that's an additional sentence that's added, and they did stress regardless, you need to have proof that you've provided notice of termination. And I don't know, Julie, what is, do you know, right now, we have to give it to them in person or deliver by mail only, I think? I don't think email's in there.
When we terminate, we send it by mail.
Okay, so this gives us a little bit more flexibility, but again, stressing to make sure that you have proof of delivery.
And that emphasis carries through for the next two as well, correct?
Yes, correct.
There was, I guess there was one question, and this was just in terms of the language. Let me make sure I get the correct one. I think it was Policy 3140, and we can take a look at this later if we need to. Actually, I noticed in 4140, it mentioned classified employees, and then I didn't know for consistency's sake, because usually if one policy is addressing classified, the other one is addressing certified. I think it says professional instead of certified, does that matter? I don't know if we need to change that or not.
Yeah, I think our policies say professional staff are certificated and they have classified in the 4000s.
So we can use those professional and certified interchangeably? It doesn't really matter then which one?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, that's fine, I mean, that was just my other question for that.
So yes, those next three policies, what is it, 4124, 4140 is also just the same with providing notice. The next policy, 5310, is health services. There is one word added there, concussion. We already had the clause in there about concussion, but just so it makes it more clear where you can find the concussion section. Also in House Bill 33, there's a requirement now that all schools have to provide free feminine hygiene projects to grades six through 12. So we already have been doing that, so we were ahead of the game on that, but it's a requirement by law now. We can choose to provide below grade six, which we do have those available for the elementary school students in the office. And then the other thing that we had to decide was, did the school decide where they're going to have these things available, or the district? And we're just, I mean, we work in collaboration with the school, but we feel like the school, the custodians, the nurses know best where to put the products. So we actually received a grant for $4,000 from the state that we applied for that offset some of the cost of us getting some new product dispensers.
Okay, so again, we were ahead of the game on this, now it's just becoming in line with what's?
Yes, and I think one of the things that is the intent of this change at the state level is, for some kids, they don't want to necessarily have to go down to the office every time they need a feminine product, so having them available in the restrooms takes some of that stigma off, because obviously we have a lot of kids here who cannot afford to buy feminine products, which is I think is why they wanted everyone to have access. So it takes off the stigma. Now, if they want to come down to the nurse's office, then they're welcome to do that, and we actually house different sizes that are down in the nurse's office if the kids need to go down there, but they also will have access to them right there in the restroom.
In the restrooms, okay, gotcha, thank you.
The next policy is 8600.4, which is bus driver certification. A lot of this is just updated language. They have stopped necessarily just using school van, obviously because of the challenges that we've been experiencing with school transportation. So you'll see van changed a lot to vehicle, but a lot of this, there's, there's really no content change, it's really just grammatical changes with, again, Ohio Department of Education and Workforce, and you'll see van changed to school vehicle.
Gotcha.
The next policy is Policy 8640, this is transportation for non-routine trips, and this policy is also changing the word van into vehicle, so Ohio revised code uses the term van, and administrative code uses vehicle. So again, just trying to make it consistent to give us flexibility to have those different vehicles that we can use.
Should we get used to seeing the phrase non-routine trips instead of field trips? Or is there a different type of trip other than a field trip that wouldn't?
No, I think that's what they're starting to use them for.
Gotcha, but that does not include, or does it include, I guess my question would be extracurricular in terms of sports and music and everything else? I thought I saw a distinction in there where the sports was included, but it didn't seem to be that it was, or not include, excuse me, in those non-routine trips.
Yeah, I'm not 100% sure about that.
Okay, that was a question I had too, so. I didn't know if that was an all encompassing umbrella for non-routine, if it's just not bringing a student to school or taking a student back. Okay, gotcha.
Okay, the last one is Policy 8660, and this is for incidental transportation of students by private vehicle. There is Ohio Administrative Code, which talks about students being able to ride in private vehicles. However, there is an exception, which is what this policy talks to, is for these incidentals. For example, let's say a kid gets sick at school, you call the parent, the parent has no way to get to school, one of our teachers or counselors or administrators says, hey, I can run them down the street if you're okay with us driving. So that would be something that would be considered incidental. Or, hey, a kid got here late and they have a field trip down at the Harding Memorial, and instead of having the kid miss the whole trip, someone from school says, hey, with parent permission, is it okay for me to drive that kid down so they can get with the field trip? We've also had a couple of incidents, like this is a longer trip, but when we had the DECA trip down at Columbus, we had, we thought we were going to have issue with getting kids down there. So again, it's not something that's planned, but it's something that comes up during, typically during school day, that we would have to do an incidental transport. So this is basically updated language, but it also allows the building principal to make those decisions.
All right, anything else on those in terms of 2A through I?
Um, no.
Other than we'll get the first official reading later on during the regular meeting, correct?
Yes, and I'll get clarification about the non-routine before we do our final.
And actually, now that I'm double checking my notes here, I had that question written down for 8660, the last one, but then I scratched it, so I may have been during this meeting confusing that, so, but yeah, I'll take a look as well, so, just in terms of what does non-routine refer to. All right, thank you for that. Next on the agenda would be discussion items, proposed cell phone policy. Madam Superintendent, I thank you for sharing with the members of the board the news article concerning the statement made by Governor DeWine on May 15th, and the audience will bear with me, I just wanted to highlight some of those comments. So the headline is Governor DeWine Signs Bill Requiring Ohio Schools to Create Cell Phone Policies. This is something that we started to discuss, I think, mid-February and then early March in terms of starting to draft something prior to the governor's call for this, or the new law coming out of the Ohio General Assembly. Just some of the highlights from the article. "The new law will require every school district in Ohio to establish an official policy governing cell phone usage during school hours, and aims to minimize student use of cell phones in K through 12 schools." Direct quote from Governor DeWine. "Our schoolchildren currently face countless distractions every day from their devices in their pockets." Continuing, "By limiting these distractions, we will reestablish the opportunity for students across Ohio to immerse themselves in their classwork, learn from their teachers, and create lifelong memories with their closest friends." There's also mentions of who sponsored the bill, in terms of Representative Jessica Miranda, Representative Tracy Richardson, other comments that were made. "This will place an emphasis on limiting cell phone use and reducing cell phone related distractions in classrooms," you can hear that a few more times. "It also includes exceptions for students who require a cell phone to..." to monitor a health concern or for student learning as determined by school officials." That was something that we had brought up the last time this committee met. It was the school district in Florida, I don't think it was Akron, that had actually focused on that in terms of students who need the usage for health concerns. "But the core mission of this bill is clear, to minimize screen time during school time." Continuing on with other quotes, "We also have the responsibility," this is Governor DeWine, "we have a responsibility to safeguard our kids from the non-stop barrage of alerts from the internet and social media that have been proven to be damaging to their mental health." And we, you know, as a district, that's something that we have been very much focused on for quite a few years now. And I think if it's something else that we can help our students to just remove one more obstacle and help them to get healthier, whether it's mentally, emotionally, or physically, I'm all for it. Continuing, just a few more. "You improve student academic performance and reduce bullying and disciplinary issues when you get phones out of the classroom," said Lieutenant Governor Husted. "Social media apps and algorithms that are addicting and harming to the students. This bill is a positive step for Ohio students and families." Just some of the logistics in the bill. "The bill passed unanimously in both the House Senate and the House of Representatives." And as Mr. Haner and I were discussing, "As a result of the new law, the Ohio Department of Education workforce will soon publish," and we'll see what that word soon means, "soon publish a model policy regarding cellphones that schools across the state can utilize as they create their cellphone policies." Last comment from the article, "Schools will be required to adopt their cellphone policies no later than July 2025, ahead of the 2025-2026 school year." The reason why I took so much time to read from that article, A, to let people know that this is statewide, it's probably going to be nationwide. This isn't something that Marion City Schools is pursuing on a whim. And also just to point out that this is something we've been discussing formally, you could say since February, and I know many members of the staff, including when I was teaching, were already starting to discuss that. The cellphone can be a fantastic tool, but I think it's turned more into the form of entertainment during the day that's definitely distracting. And I will get this to the other board members as well. This is something I want us to add to the agenda for tonight. And I just wanted to read this publicly in terms of the proposal. I know when we met last time, we discussed that, and actually, can you speak to what Dr. Bolden was, in terms of the yonder pouches, just so we can remind people the steps are already being taken?
Yes, so we actually have ordered some yonder pouches, which we had discussed before. I can't remember what school district.
That's what Akron had used, yes.
That we're going to do kind of like a test run during summer school with. So hopefully they'll get here before summer school starts. But we were going to do just a trial run to see like, how would that work? You know, taking them in the morning or passing out the pouches to kind of work out what some of those logistics would be. And then depending on what the board decides about the policy, I did look up our administrative guidelines. They haven't been updated since 2012, December 17, 2012. So I would say that we probably, there's been a lot of changes of the personal communication devices. So, you know, again, there's a lot in the current policy. And I think some of it has legal implications with as far as like taking their phones, search and seizure, that kind of thing, which I think should remain. But possibly once figuring out some of the logistics current, looking at updating the administrative guidelines to say, like, I think some of the things that you have in here that you're going to share could possibly go into like the implementation of the policy.
Okay. And what I'm about to read, this was basically from the few school districts I had checked to find out what their policy was online. I think Akron's had not been updated yet nearly as much as Florida, the Florida district, and I can't remember the name of it right now. This is what I came up with, and again, I will ask to have this added to the agenda for tonight so that the full board can discuss it. I'm going to read through it as I put it together first, but there is part of one sentence that I would recommend personally taking out once I found out that we're going to pilot the Yonder Pouch program in summer school. "Whereas the Marion City Schools Board of Education aims to create and maintain an educational environment that is conducive to teaching and learning, Marion City Schools students must store cellphones and/or listening devices, earbuds or headphones, out of sight," and here's the phrase that I would like to remove, "in a backpack or purse." I was not aware that we were making the move to try yonder pouches. Not that that's a guaranteed thing yet. But to me, the comment in a backpack or purse would be too limiting of the administration to create an administrative guideline. So if this is the policy, fine, but then it would be the administration's job to enforce that, and we don't want to hamstring the administration. Continuing with that, I'll start that part over again. "Students must store cellphones and/or listening devices out of sight during the school day while on campus, including lunchtime and transitioning between classes. Students who use their cellphones to monitor a health condition that is documented through medical records provided to the school may do so for those specific reasons. In the event of a school-wide emergency, students may access their cellphones." Obviously, if we do go with the yonder pouches, that word may, again, there'd be some changes that would need to be made. That was something we brought up before. God forbid it happened here, but we've heard numerous stories where there has been a school-wide emergency where students have been able to access their cellphones. That has actually helped law enforcement, they're communicating with parents. That's something that we definitely would want to take into account and make sure that that would be possible. "Students who violate the Marion City Schools' cellphones and listening devices policy will have their cellphones and/or listening devices," again, earbuds and headphones, "temporarily confiscated. In the event of confiscation, students are responsible for retrieving their cellphone or listening device or devices at the end of the school day. Subsequent violations will be met with further forms of disciplinary action, including but not limited to detention or in-school suspension." Again, there's a lot of discussion to be, to take place. I would like tonight to potentially be the first reading of this, but also to get a lot of discussion from the school board. So, any other discussion? Are there any roadblocks that you can see, things that we're not thinking of or things that the board you think should discuss tonight? If it's in your mind now, we can write it down so we don't forget it later.
I think, you know, this is conversations that I've had with staff. You know, there are some places where cellphones are not an issue because the teachers within those classrooms, you know, set a very clear expectation. So I don't necessarily know that the policy is the issue or just maybe coming more to an agreement on how it's being enforced and implemented across the district. I would also say that we have had discussion too about, we don't really have any type of teaching, telling the kids what the expectations are. So they all come in with their own expectations of what they're, how they use their cellphones. And different parents have different rules about, you know, when they can use their phones, when they can't use their phones. So we also talked about at the beginning of the year, next year, doing some sort of like PBIS assembly just around what the expectations are so that all kids have the information, all staff have the information. So then when you go to enforce it, it's not that it's a hidden rule, that everyone's kind of on the same page. And we also talked about possibly working on a, if you can follow the rules, then, and you can be responsible with your cellphone, perhaps you don't need a yonder pouch. However, if this might be one of the consequences of those kids that actually can't. Because we do have some kids that they follow the rules, their phone is out of sight. It's really not an issue. But then we have some other students that are struggling with that. So again, this is still all just things that we've discussed about, is this a form of, well, now you're on restriction because you weren't able to follow the expectation kind of thing? Or do we just start with all of the kids all at once? Because it also is a charge to, you know, get all of those things and the logistics of getting everybody checked in where we might only need a third of the kids or, you know, 40% of the kids. We don't really know until we go through it. But I do feel strongly in the fact that we can't just assume that kids know what they're supposed to do with phones. Many of our students now, they have electronics in their hands since almost birth, as long as they can hold a phone. And I don't necessarily know that we have communicated what our expectation is, meaning everyone on the same page. Maybe individual teachers are explaining what the expectation is in their room, but then kids have to figure out, well, I can do this in Mr. Wyblin's room, but I can't do this in Ms. Del Flor's room, and I can't do this in Mr. Haner's. More of like, we have to come to agreement, meaning the adults have to come to agreement on what it is, and then we have to stick by it. We can't then fall by the wayside and say, well, I'm going to let my kids, you know, do this because then kids are like, well, if I can do it here, why can't I do it there? So I think it's going to have to have some consensus amongst the adults who are going to be implementing whatever policy.
Okay. And there's, and again, the clear, consistent communication of that policy, not only to the students, but to the staff and to the community as well. One of the things I'd like for the rest of the board to keep in mind for discussion later is it was the Florida school district that they did a soft start at the beginning of the school year. So, okay, this is, it's going to be a reminder for the first week. Hey, next Monday, this isn't going to fly. So they gave them five days to realize how limited their access was going to be. So that might be something that we want to consider due to the fact that we most likely, we're potentially doing this to start a new school year, depending on how it goes in the summer too. I'm sure word's going to get out, and, you know, people might not be happy, but it's not just us, it's coming from the state government as well. Yeah, we're seeing the same thing with my place of work and with what you mentioned. Why should we punish one site where the manager has clearly communicated the policy and enforced it on a regular basis and cellphones are not an issue at that site? And people were talking about, well, we're going to put them in lock boxes at every single car wash that we own. And he said, well, that's, why are you punishing those who aren't violating the policy? So yeah, those considerations definitely be taken into. Just so we can have a smooth rollout and it's consistent from one classroom in one building to the other. So, okay. Mr. Haner, anything that you want to add?
Okay. I think that's it for this. And again, we will address that as a full board later on this evening. Okay, we'll have another motion to adjourn that will be seconded and approved, and the meeting is over at 6:25. Thanks very much.
Good evening. We're going to call the Monday, May 20 regular session of the board to order. First item on the agenda, obviously, we have a call to order and then the pledge usually. Tonight, once we stand for the pledge, we're also going to stand in a moment of silence for 25 seconds for two employees, former employees of the Marion City Schools that passed away recently, and Tina Kane and Mary Ann Stolarzick. I'm going to turn it over to Board Member Swanger, who's going to say a few words about each of those former employees.
So Tina Kane retired, I think, two years ago. And so Tina Kane was a teacher, taught special needs, and taught for 30, how many years, Steve, 30? 30 plus? Yes. So 30-plus years, but all in special needs. And I just remember Tina and I always used to joke, and she would have, if she was having a bad day, she would always come to me and say, do you want to have my job? Do you want to take my job? And I would always say, no. Like, thank you, but no, that's not for me. And then if I was to have a bad day, I'd go down and say, you want to take my job? And she would always be like, no, I could not do what you do. So we just, we kind of had that, but she's had a unique personality. Had a brother who was Down Syndrome, and they were just best buddies. She coached Special Olympics, did all kinds of phenomenal things, and just died way too young. So, yeah, so we just had the funeral for her last Friday. But it's kind of a shocker when you lose somebody at 57. But phenomenal special ed teacher. And then...
Mrs. Stolarzick.
Mrs. Stolarzick. Her son and I graduated in the class of '81. She taught, her husband taught, was a principal. But she taught English for years, taught middle school English, and then actually left education and went into broadcast journalism. And did, I think, I know she was on, I believe, 4, 6, and 10 at some point in time in her career as Mary Ann Michaels back in the day. And then after, even after leaving that, still came back and did some work in education. But she taught mostly at the middle school. And so again, just an outstanding teacher and person who touched the community in lots of different ways.
So that being said, we're going to rise, pledge allegiance, and then honor those two with 25 seconds of silence. Thank you. I pledge allegiance...
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Treasurer, can you call the board please?
Mr. Ratliff?
Here.
Mr. Wyblin?
Here.
Mrs. Dyer?
Here.
Ms. Swanger?
Present.
Mr. Guyer?
Here.
Item three of the agenda is the superintendent's report under students' achievements. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, President Ratliff. I'd actually now like to call Mr. Steve Clark up and Sam Klein. This was actually brought to me by Marsha Pitts. And Mr. Clark has worked with our students, and I know they've been working in the concession stand. So they're just going to take a little moment to tell you what they've been doing, what our students have been working on. And then we do have certificates to, we're going to give to all the students, but Sam's here tonight, so we'll make sure that he gets his. So I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Clark.
Thank you very much. One of the things that we look for when we get to the high school is we look for education that helps them become parts of the community. And we have been very, very fortunate. Mrs. Pitts was very good about offering this job. This job that we had in the concession area is kind of a retail-like job, and that's good and hard to find for us. But we also have other places that we go out to. Every Monday, we have OOD that comes into our classroom and teaches pre-employment skills. Tuesdays, we go to a horse stables, and we work out there. Most of the kids want to work with the animals. I'm sure they wanted to work with this then, but they do a great job. And on Thursdays, then, we were going to Goodwill Industries, working there in their retail store. And now we also have Thursdays, we go to the District Service Center, and we clean out there. So we have been fortunate to put these guys into positions where they are learning the skills that they need in order to find employment in the community. Sam, when we work in the concession stand, can you tell folks a little bit about what you do?
Well, I put pops in the front of the... In the cooler, and I put them in the front, and I stack them in the front. I stack them in the front, not the back, just the front. All them in a row in a straight order.
And we have a photograph that we go by, right?
Yes.
And so you try and match that photograph with the pop that you put in there, right?
Yes.
Okay, do you have any help, anybody helping?
I have a friend named Caleb Stone who helps.
Caleb works with you, does he?
Yes, me and Caleb work together.
Yep.
Me and Caleb have been working together. We took a summer job over at Myers. We work together as a team. Me, Caleb, and Junior, and other workers, we work together side by side.
So, thank you. Thank you.
We have a certificate for duty on the 10th, and Sam is also one of our 2024 graduates.
Yes, he is.
Oh, yep, it's a big one.
Yes.
Item 3B is recognition of the 2024 MCS retirees. Madam Superintendent?
I'm actually gonna stand here. So our retirees that are here, if you would come up, so that I can recognize you. Come on up, Kim. Which everybody want, I don't care. You guys are getting ready to retire. You can do what you wanna do. So, as superintendent, I know retirement is bittersweet. You have probably a lot of mixed emotions. I know, Kim, I was able to talk to you today. But I just wanna say that you guys have not checked out. Mr. Clark was at the door the other day. He opened up the door for me. He was standing there, working with kids. And I know that our time together has been short, but I know each of you personally, and that tells me that you are very engaged and invested in this community, invested in our school district, invested in our kids. And I truly appreciate that, because I know when people truly care about kids. And Gretchen, I know you're not working with kids, but you do a lot of behind-the-scenes work. And that's what a lot of people don't understand about operations, you know? Because you don't see the people behind the operations of school, sometimes those people don't seem important. But without the work that you're doing, Gretchen, our kids don't eat. So we are not gonna take away from that at all. I think reaching retirement is a blessing, is a milestone. You obviously deserve to enjoy the finer things in life. And if any of you wanna come back and tutor, or substitute teach, or drive a bus, we will definitely keep you in our rolodex. So I have your, let me grab yours. I wanted to make sure they signed, because I know you are all here, so I get your years right. So Gretchen Lewis has served, well, she's currently as our food service secretary, right? And she's been here for 17 years. So we wanna thank you for your service, and you will definitely be missed. And Kim Lutz, I have definitely bugged this woman's ear, because I have a passion for math and math achievement, and she has helped me, she has let me come into her math department meetings and pick the math teachers' brains, and done a lot of just behind-the-scenes with me. So I thank you for that, because I know it's difficult for teachers to have a superintendent in their ear. But I appreciate that, and I know that you have really been dedicated to working with our students. So Kim Lutz has been here for 37 years in Marion City. And last but not least, Mr. Steve Clark. Obviously, working with a group of students that needs extra love and care. But again, I am just, having have worked in different districts, you know, you, you have a belief in your students that they can, and you provide those supports to allow them to succeed. There are really no excuses. If there is a challenge or a barrier, like, we're gonna work around it. That's your attitude, and obviously, that trickles into your students, like Sam. He's very confident. He's, you know, he's talking about what he's doing, and that all goes behind strong teachers that are supporting our students to have that confidence. So I appreciate all the work that you've done with our students for 30 years, and you will be...
He's a great boss.
You hear that? So he's signing off on it, too. So we wanna thank you, and we wanna recognize you today. And here's your certificate. Now I have one more for Mr. Clark, in that he has perfect attendance.
Whoa!
Perfect attendance! So he's getting a second award. Are there any other board members who want to say anything?
Well, I mean, I think it goes without saying, the appreciation we have for each and every one of you and the jobs that you have done here. You know, I know, I see Mr. Clark probably every time I'm at Harding, doing something, you know? So I don't have to go to his classroom. He's walking students. He's talking. He's a very busy person here. I appreciate each and every one of you. I know the board does. I don't know if anybody else wants to say words.
Well, we know Mr. Clark was trying to retire last year, and he came back. So maybe, I don't know, maybe he'll come back. And I know, Mrs. Lutz, weren't you an award-winning math teacher? You received, you are just so, math is just your thing. And thank you for infusing that enthusiasm into our kids, you know, because that's amazing. And Mrs. Lewis has, like, been a stable here. And I don't know what the district is gonna be without you, Louis, you or your husband, you know? So we just appreciate your family and your commitment, your family's commitment to Marion City Schools, and I definitely will miss all of you, all of you. So thank you.
And I, can I just, real quick, I'm sitting up here just a little baffled, because I actually mentored Mr. Clark, and I can't believe that he's actually retiring after 30 years. If we remember way back at the start of it, yeah, which is amazing, but yeah, you do great work. And the cookies, you know, the Otis Spunkmeyer cookies, that was a great addition when you guys did that. So, but yes, thank you for, for what you do, all the years that you've done it. So appreciate that. Kim, I mean, we start, we started about the same time. I came to Marion a little later than what you were here. But just in terms of the, you can't teach an old dog new tricks. Absolutely you can, because a few years ago, Kim Lutz finally flipped her classroom and, and went through some trauma in the process of doing it, but at the end, yes. But, but at the end, loved what she did, so, you know, kudos to you for being willing to try something new and change, you know, after the years that you've been doing it, so I thank you for that. And Gretchen, you still might find some notes in your office from the day I stopped by and you weren't there. So just saying, you still might find, you still might find some more notes that I left there. But thank you for all of your years of service, and it's gonna be, we're gonna be Louis-less, and I'm not sure how that's gonna work.
Louis-less.
We will be Louis-less, and Marion City will not be the same. So thank you.
Three familiar faces reminds me of when I was teaching, so always, and always smiling, always a word of encouragement, and just love seeing in the hallways. And I don't know if I feel young or old right now, if you believe it, so I don't know. But thank you so much. Huge impact on me.
And I just think to kind of bring up this caboose, three educators who also were parents of students in our district. So your kids were products of our, of our school system, so appreciate that. That means a lot, and had many interactions with all three of you. Just had the fondest memories, and I'm proud to know you, so thank you so much for your service.
We have a few more that are not actually in attendance. We also are gonna see that you all next week at our breakfast. But I do wanna at least acknowledge Teresa Shrek is retiring after 29 years of service and commitment to Marion City Schools. Carol Better, there was a nice presentation for her, 15 years. She's our school counselor over at Grant Middle School. The academic awards ceremony last week here, they did a little presentation to her. Brenda Anderson is retiring after 11 years of service and commitment to Marion City Schools. John Alexander is retiring from our bus compound for 10 years of service and commitment to Marion City Schools. And then we have Kathy Taylor for 10 years of service and commitment to Marion City Schools. So if we could give all of our 2024 retirees a round of applause? Thank you.
Hey, don't sit down. We're gonna get a picture.
Mr. Clark gets another picture.
I got the short one. Okay.
Item 3C is the district update. Madam Superintendent?
My update is gonna be pretty brief today, because we are wrapping up the school year. We are down to four days left. Obviously, all of our seniors graduated yesterday. We had a great ceremony. I think it was very touching to have the kids. As many may or may not know, we allowed the students to select someone if they wanted to, to pass out their diploma. So if you were there, you saw that that was quite an emotional moment for some of those people that actually handed those students their diplomas, including for the students. We just have, we're just wrapping up this week. We still have some end-of-the-year activities. Several of our elementary schools had field day on Friday, even though it was raining, but they made do, made do with it anyway. I know at the high school, we've got exams starting on Wednesday afternoon, Thursday and Friday, so we are on a somewhat modified schedule, so those students are taking exams, and they're actually getting released a little bit early on those days. But pretty much, we are just trying to wrap up the school year. Our school bus drivers, their last day is also the last day with the kids, so we wanna make sure that we're sending them off. And then right around the corner is summer school. We do still have space available, so we're telling parents, like, if you still are looking for a place for your kids to be engaged and active, we are still taking applications for that and continuing to register kids for kindergarten and preschool for next year. I will just say one more thing, too, about staff. As we had discussed before, giving them some time to kind of break through some of those new materials for curriculum. So they actually will have two days next week without kids, on Tuesday and Wednesday. I've asked administrators, which they typically do this anyway, just in a short end-of-the-year meeting, no longer than one hour, just to kind of wrap up whatever they need to do. And then the rest of that time is gonna be for teachers to get through those boxes, work with their teams on anything they need to get set before the summer gets here. So it just worked out that the way the calendar was, and we decided not to have any, you know, district PD that they had to attend on those days to allow them to have that time. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. I know it's not on air. Mr. Hayner, do you have anything?
Would do not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Item 4A is the board minutes approval. Motion to approve the board minutes from April 23rd, 2024, and April 29th, 2024. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Any corrections? Madam Treasurer, can you call the roll?
Mr. Wibbling?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes. Item 4B, under the treasurer's report, is financial approvals. The sub-motion will approve the following items: the April 2024 checks, the fund balances, and the financial report. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Wibbling?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes. Item 4C, the five-year forecast. Motion to approve the five-year forecast as presented.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All right, let me...
Any discussion?
Would you like me to do my presentation?
Yes.
I was waiting for you to present. When you didn't present, I was...
We can guess.
I was assuming we went off the...
Yes.
All right. All right. I don't have a lot of slides tonight, but I did wanna go over a few things. Last month, if you were here for or watched the financial, the finance committee report, I went over the revenue in more detail, so I won't go into a whole lot of detail tonight on that. You can watch that if you need some more detail on that. But this is, this slide shows fiscal year '24, so it just shows that our revenue does exceed our expenditures for the year, and our gain for the year will be just over $4.5 million, which is, which is a really good place to be. I think our, our cash balance is going to be in a better place than it's been in a very long time. So, which is good moving forward. So just this, this puzzle just shows our revenue. We are, you know, 77% of our revenue comes from the state funding, 18% from local taxes, and then 5% from other revenue, which is things like Medicaid reimbursement and things like that. So that's just a little bit of breakdown of that. Our expend, this is our expenditures. Personnel cost, which is our salaries and benefits, is 80% of our expenditures, which is very normal for a school district. So purchase services is 12%, and all other is 7%. So we're right in line. That's pretty standard, the 80%.
Only 99%.
So, well, okay. It doesn't show the rounding.
Okay.
So moving forward for the five years, this is just a chart showing, you know, in the purply-blue color there is our revenue, and the orange is our expenditures on that first part. So as you see, 2024, revenue is higher than expenditures. But projecting '25 through '28, it, what switches back to expenditures are higher than our revenue. So if you, the next chart over, our cash balance, high on, in '24, and then it dips a lot. So something, something we will definitely need to watch and monitor very closely. This is another just kind of way of looking at it. Our projected annual change in revenue is 1.5%, but our change in expenses is 5.5%. So that doesn't really translate very well to our balances, so. So here's a simplified forecast, which is the actual numbers, and this is also in the assumptions, this chart. So you can see, you know, the $25 million balance for fiscal year '24, and then all the way to fiscal '28, it's projecting a $5 million balance. Now, I know, you guys know, this is a forecast, and the reason we do this is so we can plan, so we don't get to that. And so it's a way to, you know, look at things, so, you know, at this point, we're gonna have to start looking at expenditures, you know, to figure out what we can do, because our revenue is pretty much set. You know, there are some unknowns as far as, you know, what the state is going to fund and the percentage increase and things in the future. But that is, this, you know, this is always the way it is, but at least for the, I mean, you know, '24, '25, and '26, we're still have a very good cash balance. So we have time to work on those expenditures and start bringing them under control, so we don't get to the future balances. Days cash on hand, I know this is something that is, you know, it's a good way to look at it. So at the end of 2024, we should have about 168 days cash on hand, which is, which is a really good place. The experts say three to six months' worth of cash, you know, so that'd be anywhere from 90 to 120 days, so, or 180 days. So we're, you know, next two year, you know, '24, '25, we're in good shape. And again, you know, we're dropping just under that in 2026. So we're gonna have, you know, start doing the work in this next year to see where, you know, so we don't get to that. We don't wanna be at 31 days cash at the end of the five years. This is just a, a chart to show you the changes in our expenses from fiscal year '24 to fiscal year '25. It's a, it's a considerable jump. And so salaries and benefits is the biggest part of the jump, of course, since that's 80% of our expenses. But so ESAR, we're bringing about $2.9 million back in salaries and benefits from ESAR Fund, back to general fund. The new extracurricular department, that's another about $450,000. And then certified FTEs, we're hiring some of our own, like, OTs rather than being contracted out, and there's a few other... And there's a few other positions that are needed. So, so over $3.7 million of increases from between '24 and '25 in salaries and benefits. Purchase services, ESAR, we're bringing about $1.2 million back in purchase services. And that's a lot of our contract services that, for additional, some additional staff that we contract and things like that. And supplies, ESAR supplies, we, all of the Chromebooks, computers, and the curriculum and those kinds of things have been purchased out of ESAR for the past few years so that those expenses will be coming back. I did reduce our transfers out, which is into our capital projects funds as a possible way to save, although that is something that we may have to increase depending on our, our needs. But, so that's, and then there's another $1.5 million of increase to our expenses and that's just general staff raises and insurance costs, things that happen every year. And, you know, things like our utilities have been going like everybody else's at home. Ours is going up, 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 things like that is all built in to increase as well.
On that total of four, six, does that include the 1.5?
No.
Okay.
1.5 is, is in addition to that. Because it's over, it's over $6 million increase next year.
And that's if we take all the transfers out?
Yeah, well, not all the transfers, part of them. I, I reduced it, yeah.
Eighty-five.
Yeah.
If we took that, we're still four, six, plus the 1.5.
Right.
Okay.
So this is one of the things I, I shared during the revenue part last, last meeting. But this is the, where I have projected for our enrollment. And so this is why our revenue is not increasing very much. We have been dropping in enrollment over the, you know, since 2019. It's been a drop every year. So I did project that we would continue to drop, just not at as a significant rate. Now, if we can turn that around, that would be fantastic, you know, keep our students, and that would increase our revenue, so that would change the forecast in the future. But at this time, I, you know, I could not not keep dropping. It's just, that would just, that wouldn't be wise to do. We have to, have to prepare for whatever, whatever happens. So, you know, if we can get back up to the 4,000 mark, that would be fantastic. But we'll, we gotta keep our kids so they can't keep going to the community schools and things like that around here, so. So this shows our per pupil general fund expenditures. So as our enrollment goes down, but our expenses go up, you can see then each, each child would, it would be an additional cost each year for those kids. So, you know, that's, that's not where you, you don't wanna be that drastic. So, you know, again, if our enrollment does drop, then I'm sure there's other things to look at as far as staffing and where we are there. But that's, we aren't, until we can work through those things, there's no, nothing's been set in stone on that, but. And then this is just a little chart about what, what each cost of our student. So it's $80 a day per student. And our, our residents pay 12% of that $80 and all the other revenue is 88% of that. So I just thought that was very, that's, you know, very telling as far as where we are, how dependent we are on the state. So. That's all I have on my slides. It, I did give you a copy of the forecast and all the assumptions, which has a lot of, a lot of detail. And it's also available, anyone can, from the public, if anybody wants to look at that, it is available in the, in the board meetings, so.
I would, I would encourage our public to view our forecast. What she presented tonight does not do it justice for the hard work she put in. She has 22 pages to look at, different ways to look at things, as she's went over some of it. But there's much more in that forecast if you wanna check that out. I guess, Madam Treasurer, in summary, we're basically flatlined due to losing students' income. And really, what we've covered with COVID money or ESAR funds is now coming back onto the general.
Right.
So our income coming in is flatlined, but yet our expenses are gonna increase and keep increasing as projected because obviously people get raises and, you know, insurance costs, meaning health and benefit costs have gone up and so forth and so on. So we've got a serious issue facing this district here.
And I would just, it's something that between the board and our administration and staff, we're going to have to have, you know, some conversations, what's important here? What do we, what do we have to have? And maybe what is something that we can look at possibly cutting back a little bit or whatever? You know, if things change, enrollment changes, then maybe we don't have to have some of those conversations. But we do have to start planning because we don't wanna wait till two years from now and then go, oh, we're almost out of money, you know? We gotta, and I, you know, to stay in a good place, we really need to stay in that three to six-month range of cash because you just never know when you're gonna have that emergency, whatever, to, that you're gonna need those funds. And so that's, that's where the comfort spot is for most districts. More, more if possible, but that's very, very difficult to do.
Yep. I, I understand that cash on hand that you're talking about, but some of that is because we had extra money during the COVID years, so we were able to increase.
Right, I mean, because, you know, we were able to, they were able to add, you know, there's some positions and needs were being met, you know, student needs that were being met. And a lot of those positions we're keeping, so that's part of, you know, because it's working. So that's one of those things that, some of those hard conversations in the future, not necessarily those programs, but, you know, like I said, if we have declining enrollment, then you look at possible staffing in some areas, things like that. So there's, but there's conversations that we will definitely need to have and work on just some future plans to not keep increasing those expenses.
But we, we agree that that cash on hand was helped by the.
Yeah, definitely, definitely helped by.
That's what I mean. I don't want people to think that we're just, you know, blowing through money.
No, no.
I mean, there, there's been some talk of that and I wanna make sure that.
No, absolutely.
We're being fiscally responsible.
Just this fiscal year, we had $10 million of ESAR funds to spend. So we're, you know, it funded a lot of personnel. It funded some projects to upgrade some buildings, all of, you know, all of the supplies, the curricular supplies and, you know, the computers and Chromebooks and things like that. So there's a lot of, a lot of that expenditure, you know, was used, I mean, it was used wisely during, you know, for ESAR to, you know, because like some of the things they did in the buildings, you know, upgrading some of the equipment, that there just wasn't, there was not gonna be enough money in general fund to do those things. So they used ESAR funds to do those things and they were needed done, so.
So were there, were there any positions that we added using ESAR money that we are going to continue to fund post? Do we know how many of those?
A lot of that is the contracted positions, the PCE rooms and things like that. I don't know all the acronyms, but the, the ESPs and the things like that. That, so those were all ESAR adds.
Don't we have some administrative staff at the ESC that was paid through ESAR or no?
Yeah.
Or, yeah, okay.
There's, there's, there's been, there's been a lot, a lot of that, so.
Which was all well and good when the money's come, right? And then you're, like you're saying, we're gonna have to have a priority moving forward
Right.
of what we're keeping and what we may have to cut. But it, it's pretty clear, I think, from the funding that had, it's unfortunate COVID happened and did the things that COVID did, but had we not had that, these talks would have happened sooner rather than what we've.
Yeah, and there, you know, may have not, additional staff probably would never have been added at that point, so.
So my question, when I had talked to you, I was looking at where we get money because of the economic, our kids who live in poverty, is that covered in?
Yeah, that was part, that's, that's all wrapped up in the state revenue.
One big, okay.
Yeah.
All right. And what did you say that amount was? Did he say like a four-point something million that we get?
It's something like, I don't know off the top of my head.
Yeah.
I don't have that report with me, but I can get you that for sure.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, and that's, cuz that's one of those, if you watch, did you, were you able to watch the, the finance committee report from last month?
No, no.
That's, a lot of that's explained in there. I would highly recommend that you watch that.
Okay. And I know, too, Olympia's been advocating that our kids and the free lunch, that we need to make sure our parents know that we have to complete that form so that when that form comes.
Yeah, that's for.
Is it green still? We gotta make, we gotta color code it when the green form comes home. Because, could you explain just a little bit about that form and how important it is?
Um, just that in the past, you know, we have had additional funds and obviously because we have such a high percentage of our students that qualify for free and reduced lunch, we can be district-wide. However, it is important that we actually get every family to fill out the application so we have an accurate number. And then we get a higher reimbursement rate from the state when, once those applications are completed. So again, we'll have a big push when those original, you know, start of the school year and get all your forms in. That will be up in the front cuz it'll be a different message cuz our families aren't used to filling it out. They just, you know, because we haven't been doing it in the past. And we've also worked out with our food service, like they're gonna attend open house this year to give information about our meal program as well as assist families in completing those forms.
Okay. Yeah, and part of that, just to piggyback, you know, that's food service, which is a separate fund from what the five-year forecast is general fund. But we have a good balance in that food service fund and we wanna keep that balance so general fund doesn't have to help food service. Cuz that, in some districts, that is the case. And so we're trying to make sure that we don't ever have to do that. The food service can stay independent and its own fund without help.
So, and Madam Superintendent, I had talked to you, Jolene says we gotta figure out, you know, have the conversations about trimming the fat. And so when we met, I indicated to you that thing that I saw at OSBA that we can kind of look at changes in salary. I think that would be a good thing to share with everybody so that we can see, you know, how much we're losing, what do we need to do? Can we move people around or whatever? And I think you said you had something like that, right?
Yeah, we, we just started to, actually Julie's maintaining the list of like any added positions that we have and any positions that we're eliminating or not gonna have. Like, for example, I'll give you one example, is the blended learning program. We're not gonna be running a blended learning program next year because, number one, we're spending a lot of money on the Apex program that we're using and we really don't have that many kids that are, that we can't meet their needs through just having them attend classes or scheduling them in a way that we need to. So that's an example of, does it make sense to have two FTEs running a blended learning program when we're struggling to do that, when those two FTEs could be used elsewhere, possibly, depending on certification? So, I mean, those are just examples of things like, it's a nice to have, but is it absolutely necessary? When you look at the grand scheme of things, when you look at the grand scheme of things and talking to staff, that was one of the things that we decided that we were not gonna move forward with next year.
Now, how will that look, though? Because isn't the blended, they come to school for so long and then they, they leave and will we get pushed back from parents? Are they supposed to do so much at school and then go home and do? So now you're saying if we're gonna eliminate that, they're gonna do it all within our school setting? Or what is that like?
Correct, correct. Because also, we have issues with where are middle school kids going for half of a day?
And we have, I mean, when we talk FTEs for the public, that's a full-time educator. But also, if our kids are in school, then they have access to teachers all day to help them with whatever those issues are that they're dealing with, whether it's an academic issue, issue or a social issue. They actually have people around who are certified to help them.
And food.
And, and we have the food services which helps.
As far as what Madam Superintendent, I think she's kept her eye on the budget. I think we've had board meeting discussions about a priority list and I think she was looking, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but looking at things that right off the top, we can start eliminating because we know this is happening shortly. And she's found at least the blended learning program. You know, we're not getting, if you will, the bang for the buck. There are a few kids that are benefiting, but over the grand scheme of things, the cost, savings or what it's costing us for the few kids we have needed to be eliminated. And I think she's taken the action to do that and I applaud that because we're in serious, if anything, these, these numbers and what the board has to do, given maybe her some direction, we're in some serious financial difficulties. And I'll be the first one to say at some point, and it might not be two or three years or five years, but at some point, this community is gonna have to figure out what kind of services they want from their school district. And we might have to ask them like other school districts have been to, do you want these programs? If so, this is what it's gonna look like tax-wise and so forth. Because the income and what we are having, the staff we're having and the services we're trying to provide has outgrown our income at some level. I mean, we can't provide everything to everyone. It's unfortunate, but that's where we're gonna be in a few years. So hopefully, we can get on top of this and start working on it as a board so the next board, you know, a year and a half from now, don't have some of these issues facing it. So I'm glad, you know, we're doing detailed 22-page reports because it's needed and helping people focus on what we need to be doing.
And when you talk about focus, too, and this is what I've been jotting down here, is that I think we also need a simultaneous focus on the other side of this, too, you know, looking at the, the student enrollment. And I think we had students and students and students, but to me, it's families, too. We talk about staff retention and how do we attract certain staff? Well, what about families? How do we retain the families that we already have? How do we attract other families to come into the district? And I know that, you know, we literally broadcast a lot of the stuff that we're doing here, but I don't know how much we look into when, when we know that a family is leaving. Well, why are you choosing another school aside from Marion City Schools? And what can we do better? And if we were able to solve that and the equation, then perhaps the, the budget priorities, we can lessen the impact that that would have. But as a board moving forward and a district moving forward, how do we retain those families? And how do we attract other families? No, we offer the best education experience for 13 years in this county, hands down. And that's what we need to, to live up to and to communicate. And we just can't forget that other side of the equation.
I would like to just add two things also for you to consider as board members. Number one, to add on to Mr. Weidling's point, you know, staff retention does have a big deal to do with it. I know that we're talking about addressing families, but I mean, you just saw these educators who've been here for such a long time. They build relationships with families when they stay in districts. And guess what? If you don't trust that your kid is gonna be taking care of Marion City Schools, but you see Ms. Lutes or you see Mr. Clark and they're like, okay, I remember them. They, they were my teacher or they had my older kid, they have buy-in with the school district. When you have a constant turnover of staff, including principals, teachers, that, that relationship is not there. And that is critical for a place like Marion, where we have a lot of families who don't trust our school system, right? So, you know, I understand that, yes, we need to, you know, cater to families, that's a piece of it. But the staff retention and the buy-in to the community and the relationships that can be built with families over generations keeps kids going. I have seen parents put their kids in schools that aren't the best schools. They're not in the best neighborhoods. But what is it? It's because they believe in the staff that's there and they trust that those staff members are caring for their kids. So that has a piece to do with it. The other thing is why I say this is extremely important for the strategic plan when these priorities get decided upon amongst this board because this is where I will take my direction. This is where our administration is gonna take direction. And a lot of times, you'll see on board agendas, which I hope that we get to that point, is every single thing that we're talking about, we're gonna say, does it match goal one, two, or three? And if it doesn't match goal one, two, or three, then we, not saying we can't do it, but we're gonna have to have further discussion as to where it fits in to what we have agreed to as a team, as a board, as to what the priorities are for. Which means, yes, there are gonna be some people who might be upset because their program is not, you know, continuing and we have to work through that. Marion is at a disadvantage because we don't have a lot of resources for our families in the community. I just had this discussion earlier in a meeting about the extracurricular hole or after-school activity hole that's in our community. In some communities, it doesn't matter if the school provides it. Because guess what? They have multiple places they can go, different agencies, churches that are open. We are struggling with that in the community, so the school district becomes. We are struggling with that in the community, so the school district becomes the catch-all, be-all. So again, just as President Ratliff said, we can't do 100 things and do them well. But what are the few things that we can agree on that we're gonna work towards that will give us the biggest bang for our buck and that will help our kids and families get to the point that we need them to get to?
I, I agree with you 100% on that. And I do believe staff retention is where we need to start and focus on. But we've had a, a problem for a long time. And you're saying build relationships, that's all true. We've had a, we've had a problem for a long time in this district not hiring from within for administrative positions. We've had a, a problem of not hiring people to come back home and work in their district when they've applied. We've had a problem letting our own people go to bring in outsiders and then those outsiders then leave. This is a long history of this district of failing on staff retention. And, and I know that I have the commitment from you and everybody at these tables to work on the staff retention going forward. And I think we're doing better over the last couple of years. And everybody should know that because we don't have, we've not seen the exodus of teachers in the last year or two that we've seen prior. I think that's being told to the board several times at the different school locations that we've went to and so forth. So I think we're doing better with retention, but we're not where we wanna be by any means. And that's where we gotta start, as you've pointed out. It's a big deal in a small community like this, so. Any thoughts? Anyone else?
Thank you, Jolene.
Need to take the vote now, please.
Did we already have that motion?
We had the motion.
Oh, we had the motion.
We had the motion early.
This is the vote to approve the five-year forecast as presented.
All right. Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes. Item 4D is the donations. The treasurer recommends approval of the following donations, $1,000 from Garfield PTA to Garfield's principal fund. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion? You call the roll, please.
Thank you for giving it to the principal's fund.
Thank, thank you Garfield PTA for donating that to the principal's fund.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes. Item five is hearing from the public. The Board of Education recognizes the value of school governance, of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. Public participation is a time set aside for the board to listen to public comments, but is not intended to facilitate dialogue. The board offers public participation to members of the public in accordance with the procedures below. The board applies these procedures to all speakers. It does not discriminate based on the identity of the speaker, content of the speech, or the viewpoint of the speaker. The rest of that, if you wanna read it, that is our policy, policy 169.1 of public participation at board meetings. I had one sheet that was filled out from Mr. Weber. Is there anybody else? Mr. Weber, sir? The mic is yours, sir.
My name's Tony Weber. I'm a employee at Marion City Schools. I'm here to talk about the Educlimer program we have that teachers use for discipline. I'm asking maybe the board to look at it, maybe table that vote or vote no on it. It's not a very teacher-friendly. The data you get is excellent, but it's more or less kind of skewed data. Because a lot of the teachers do not put everything in. As a phys ed teacher, if I have one Educlimer per class, say I have six classes a day, that's six referrals. And Kathy Swanger will know I'm not the greatest on this stuff, but I'm trying. It's, it's eight to 12 minutes to get it done correctly. So, you know, my principal knows what's going on and everybody, the teachers and the other people. So it's difficult to go through. If it was more teacher-friendly, it'd be great. I'd also like to invite anybody to come over and, and watch and look at that program and have, have a teacher or somebody go through it with you. It is a difficult program to do. I also don't think the teachers, I know at the elementary, I'm not familiar with middle school or high school, but it's hard to get through. And I know a case in our building where a teacher is talking specialized services and they look at the Educlimer data, well, there's only three Educlimers. Well, I know this kid in my phys ed class, if I would do that, he would have many. I sent him out, sent him out. He's very good in art. So that would be good data to have, but it's something that is very difficult to go through. And if we look at the board policy and the student conduct, you know, there's a lot of things that we could be putting in Educlimer. We need to find something that's quick and easy for teachers. Your data will be much better. Also, I think we're fooling ourselves with some of the problems or there are lack of problems at Marion City Schools. My head was swirling just listening to this last conversation. A lot of our problems that we have in our, our, our classes has, has to do with discipline. We have students that we need special services for them. We've had the special ed department come to our building and talk to us. Great discussions, but we need more. Teachers need help. And I don't wanna go to meetings to find out what I'm gonna do SEL. I'm here to teach physical education. If I have a problem with a student, write it up, that needs to be taken care of and it's not always being taken care of. I just wanted to say that about that program. I think the data that they get is excellent. When Mr. Menzey came up in December, talked about it, I thought his data was great. I know it helps when I'm on our building management team. It's great data to see, but it's very limited data.
Let me, let me ask a couple of clarifications. You're saying it's great data and you said that two or three times.
I, I'm looking at the data and going through it, the limited that we have, it's good to see because you can see what time the kids are doing, it's all that. But it's not, I would say you're probably getting one out of eight. You're not getting.
When you say one out of eight, you mean only one?
If it was simpler, if it was a simpler data, you would have eight times the many.
Okay.
Entry data.
Okay, and then you had said, and you kept using the word as not teacher-friendly, that, that phrase right there. What do you mean by it's not?
If I had time and I, if I could, I just saw that you're working on that now. If I had time, I could just go right on there and put it right up there and we could all take a look at it. So I'm inviting you to come go through that program. I could send it up with a, you know, put it, I'll put my granddaughter's name in, whatever. Could go, put all the data in and show you how, how it would work.
But I, um, when you're saying it's not teacher-friendly, you're saying it's different.
Time-consuming.
It's time-consuming.
Yes.
So, and I think you used eight to 12 minutes to do one report.
For Tony Weber.
Yeah, yeah.
Some other people, it's still, it's a long process to make sure you're doing a, a service to everybody. Your, their homeroom teacher, your principal, so everybody knows what happened and, you know, in, in during the situation.
So you're, you're not saying the district shouldn't have something and this is a waste of money. You're just saying this particular program just takes too long to put it in. So teachers, in your opinion, teachers are avoiding it because they simply don't have the time. So maybe our data, which is good, might be a little skewed because we're not getting enough of it.
Right.
Is that what you're saying?
So then it leads back to, you know, maybe some of these problems we're having with kids leaving our district because there are discipline problems. I know in our building, we had some students leave our district.
And we, we, we all understand that we got some discipline problems.
Can I do one clarification question as well? I'm, I'm looking at our notes for this concerning Educlimer and it compiles data from all assessments, discipline grades, attendance, RIMPs, the whole deal. Would you say, or I guess I'll ask you the question instead, which aspect of Educlimer is the most time-consuming? Is it just?
I'm always, I'm only a part of the discipline part. So the other part, that's why I think when Mr. Menzey came up there and came over there, I, you know, that would be something that he would be able to talk better about than I can. I'm going from what I'm doing and seeing the discipline and what I, I use with the program.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And I, I know you're not a techie, but is there any other program that you are aware of that does better than Educlimer?
No, that's what I was hoping you would know. I had Ms. Harper come in and help me. One of the things that happens, I type in my principal's name, then I click and then it comes, then it keeps his name, P A N. So I have to erase that name, then I go to the next person, Mrs. Powers. Then it goes P O W, so I have to erase that. Then my ESP, Ms. Guyer, then her name comes back, so I have to erase that. And then I click the homeroom teacher. It's just one of those, one of those things that it's very, and I asked Brandy, it's like, and she looked at, looked up. That's just the way it is.
And you're only speaking, as Mr. Wibling pointed out, to the discipline piece of the program.
That's the only part of that, dealing with it. Principals, ESP, everybody else could go over some of that stuff.
Yeah, yeah. They use it for other things, as Mr. Wibling, yep, okay.
Yeah, um, I think though, because I emailed Olympia about Educlimer and she has that hyperlink already included in our board update. So if you get a minute to kind of look through that. I like the fact that, especially with RIMPs, I know that's a real difficult thing to, to track. And pretty soon, RIMPs are gonna follow students, how far Olympia, we had talked about?
Up through high school.
Up to high school. So, I mean, we do need a storehouse in which to have this information so that teachers will have the data for their student. I don't know, when I went in, because I said we need to create a fake person so that we could actually go through. And then I went to this hyperlink and I was very amazed at just how concise things are. But I'm thinking maybe the discipline is, I don't wanna say not a priority or whatever. Maybe everybody's focused on the RIMPs or whatever test that they're taking or whatever and that information. But it's filled with a lot of, of stuff. So I can understand when you say it's not teacher-friendly because there's a lot, but there's a lot of good information there. So if you guys haven't, you know, visited and done the hyperlink, and good data here from you Olympia as far as, what's the staff talking about as far as Educlimer is concerned? Olympia, other staff, not just, I mean.
Yeah, I'm not really prepared to have dialogue on this topic.
Okay, okay.
And, and the, the issue is there are some programs that are not as user-friendly. And again, if you're an elementary teacher that has 22 students in their classroom, then you may have time to put information in where you're in a different situation because you have six different classes a day, which may be similar to the high school where you have six classes a day and an incident happens and you have three minutes between classes or four minutes between classes and you've gotta try to get something in before you then go on and the next class comes in. And so I, I understand that some of that is, is difficult to do based on just circumstances of, of teaching. I just don't know that there's a better system.
I don't either, that's why I asked this. And so I would ask you just maybe to table if there's something out there and maybe find out from other homeroom teachers because I know it's a struggle in our building. Just not me.
Yeah, and I know that the discipline is one piece, but.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know if we can afford to table it though. I think. Dude, I remember a time when we didn't have a system like this and things were all over the place because we had students who are transient and sometimes their data got lost in the move or you let your mom have the gray card to take to the, the next place or whatever. And so I remember a time when, when we didn't and I said this beats a, beats a blank, you know, for right now. And I don't know if we can afford to or not afford. I don't know if we can table it as we research and try to find something different. But we can research for future use. And the superintendent has already told us that she doesn't, she's not prepared to have this conversation. But I, I would hate to leave the table today without anything in place.
Well, I haven't called teachers, you asked me what other teachers. I mean, we have a set district labor management committee meeting every month where issues that staff, MEA staff have are brought to us. This has not been brought to us. As a matter of fact, it's my understanding that Educlimer came into play so that teachers had the autonomy to make sure that they were able to document the things that they needed to and not have to go through administration and have things like, I mean, I know on paper sometimes like, oh, that's not really, doesn't go into the system. That does go into the system. So, you know, it has not been brought forward for discussion as a concern from MEA.
Okay.
And I will say that we did research some other things, like Power School has something called, it's not e-collect forms, but it's, they have a, a discipline-type thing. But again, these, this is the same thing with you, you start to get staff comfortable using something and then we're switching for I don't know what reason and then they have to get acumen and do something else.
It was my understanding we were doing it, the Educlimer, not just for discipline, but for all the things Mr. Wibling had said, because we got more bang for our buck at a Educlimer than any other system. So it allowed us to do all the things Mr. Wibling had set off. So unfortunately, it might not be user-friendly for the discipline. But it was my understanding it was the best way to do the RIMPs and everything else.
And you are not gonna find a piece of technology that is perfect?
No, I understand that.
It doesn't exist.
I just don't know that we. At this, well, at this point, we're not prepared for another alternative. But I don't know that there's an alternative that for the money we spend on Educlimer, they can give us all the things that Educlimer is giving us is the problem.
And I would hate for teachers, like, we got EL stuff coming, you know, literacy stuff coming, that's new. Math stuff, new, and then to throw something else new on teachers.
But I am very concerned about our data may be skewed because teachers are not potentially putting it in because it is time-consuming or they don't have time. And maybe they're only putting in the worst of the worst. I don't, I don't know that, but Mr. Weber thinks so. I'm just saying I, I am concerned about that. But I also understand the program does more than the.
Right, and the reality is that, that is one piece of technology that we have. I made a list two years ago for Mrs. Musbach Wellman to, about all of the technology that teachers have to use and the things that they have to use and the things that they do use and then the things that some people use. And if you actually look at that list of technology, it is pretty lengthy. And so, again, having worked in the technology department, every time you say, oh, now we're gonna switch to this, oh, now we're gonna switch. And I understand that it's not user-friendly at times and I understand that it's difficult, but learning a new system might be even worse. And we may not be able to get the other data off of it that we get. So no, it's not perfect, but it's what we have and it's what people are at least comfortable with, even if it does take a little longer and it's, it's a little clunky.
Is it possible to begin the next school year, during one of the PD days, convocation day, whatever, to have, get a select group of teachers who, who are able and they prioritize entrance, entering data into Educlimer? And how do they do it? You know, how do they prioritize their day? We're saying thing with my work right now, it's just changing habits. You give them something new, they've got a thousand things to do already and this is gonna get pushed back. But if we have people who do it extremely well and what is their system? How do they approach it every day? Especially for our new teachers coming in the district and just get them used to it immediately. But I would lean on those people who are successful at it and, you know, I would be right there with Tony. Educlimer came in as I was leaving, so it wasn't something that I became familiar with. But find out people who do it well and find out how they get it into their day. That would be a recommendation I would make.
We have offered professional development.
Well, they might not like to hear, don't offer it.
And I know especially, we did have one thing, just like the way that they enter it, the way they mark it, whether that and the administrators see it. So we worked through that because the bus drivers also enter their discipline concerns on the bus. They only use it for discipline, bus drivers do. But we realized that was just a training thing. So we have been offering and I don't know how full those sessions have been, but I can take that back to the T and L team.
Okay, moving on to agenda confirmation. So I'm making a motion, I guess, to delete the...
It's on the number 10.
10, I think it's D. Yep, 10D.
10D.
I can explain to everybody who's taking this session at some point, but I'm eliminate, I'm trying, making a motion to eliminate that. Also, looking at the list, I need to pull out, which we can do this now or later, I guess, but I need to pull out from there, Ms. Adams, Amanda Adams. And vote on her separately. I think she's under the three-year limited teaching contract, which is under C, 10C, maybe? And then she's also under the supplemental as a coach, I believe in the middle school. Yeah.
Are you going to pull out those other ones?
Just I needed her pulled out, and I'm...
The four that we need to pull out, no?
I think the other ones have already been removed, right, Mr. Weidling?
Yeah, they're pulled.
Okay. I think everything's pulled out. Those are just the two I'm asking on a motion, a motion to delete 10, 10D.
Do we need a separate motion to add a cell phone policy discussion? I think that would be best, I don't know if it needs a separate motion or...
Yeah, I'm going to go, I think we should do, you're wanting to add your...
Cell phone policy. I think 17B would be the appropriate place to put that as we're discussing the other policies.
17B. All right. So the first one, I would make a motion to eliminate 10D off the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second, Ted.
Which is the removal of Ayers Ratliff to be hired for substitute teacher, aide or media specialist.
Oh, but no name there?
It's, it's Ayers Ratliff.
I know, but on our agenda, is there a name?
It's on the second, it bleeds over that second page, right, for 11.
Top of page.
Oh, the second page, I got it, got it, got it, okay. So what was the motion?
Motion is to remove that from the tonight's agenda.
Ready for roll?
Yep, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
And then my second would be to remove and vote separately for Ms. Adams, Mandy Adams, Amanda Adams, for, I believe she's up for two positions. So that just needs to be taken out of the consent agenda.
One second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
And I think the third motion is, Mr. Weidling is making a motion to put a cell phone policy he wrote and sent to us, label proposed policy, cell phones, and listening devices to be added under 17B, the policy section, as a first reading. Is that right?
That's correct.
All right. I'll second the motion. Can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Any other additions or deletions? Okay, 6B, approval of the agenda. I make a motion to approve the agenda as now amended.
Second.
Can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Item 7 is old, that motion carries as the agenda has amended. Item 7, old business. I don't believe we have anything listed there. Going to 8, new business. 8A is resolution for transportation repairs and maintenance. Madam Superintendent, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Ratliff. This resolution is for making rework and painting the exterior of the bus garage. This hasn't been done in quite some time, so we did put bids out for the work, and this is the resolution for that work.
And I understand that was one of the lower bids or the lowest bid, I believe, right?
Correct, yeah.
And I think it has, if you said that we haven't done much maintenance out there, we've kind of neglected that building. So I would make a motion to approve this.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Motion carries, item 8B, resolution for Harding High School water heater replacement. Madam Superintendent.
This is for a water heater replacement in, at Harding. We currently have some that the parts are no longer even available, so we're going for a complete replacement of the water heater.
Make the motion to approve.
Yep. Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? I guess my question is, it's just we can't find the parts, or is this thing broken down and we can't find the parts?
Is it obsolete? No, it's just been there for that long.
Are we doing preventative, are we doing preventative?
So the, the water heater's about 22 years old, and their parts are no longer available. Like, they do not make them anymore. And that's, that's where we run into a lot of our equipment. Everything's 22 years old.
I, I guess my, my ask then is, is it, we believe here in the future we're going to have an issue, and it's preventative, so we're just going to scrap it even though it's working?
No, we, we have one that's down.
Okay, that, that, yep, that's what I'm asking.
There's, there's two water heaters, one is down.
Okay, thank you, sir. So this is a replacement, I guess, of a heater, okay.
I think if it lasted 22 years, that's pretty amazing.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes. Item 9, which is an inter-agency agreement, Ohio Heartland CAC Head Start slash N C O E S C slash the school districts in Marion County. Madam Superintendent.
So the inter-agency agreement is something that we do annually. It's the school districts all of Marion County with the North Central Ohio Educational Service Center and Ohio Heartland Head Start. And basically, it's just the agreement that we're all going to agree that we're doing best practices, we're going to do transition plans for our kids from preschool to kindergarten, and that we're also going to do shared trainings to share resources in this area, preschool.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes. Motion carries, item 9B, Ohio Heartland CAC Head Start, N C O E S C, the school districts in Marion County.
Okay, this is another piece that goes along with the inter-agency agreement. However, this is a memorandum of understanding, also between the school districts in Marion County, the North Central Ohio Educational Service Center, and Ohio Heartland CAC Head Start. And this one basically says that each of the districts is going to be in agreement that if we have students that are our students that live in Marion County, this is for Marion City, each district would be doing this on their own, that we agree to provide those itinerant services for them. Obviously, you know, we are responsible for that. So Head Start may, you know, run the Head Start program. However, we still service our kids that are there that qualify for special education services.
It's obviously needed.
We do.
Yep.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes. Motion carries on to 9C, curriculum associates iReady. Madam Superintendent.
Okay, I think that everyone on this board is familiar with iReady. Again, this is the program that we're using across the district to not only do our assessments at the beginning of the year, middle of the year, end of the year. So every time we do those reports and we pull how the district is doing, this is the assessment that we use, K through 8. Also, there is a piece that goes along with iReady that actually works with each kid at their level. So, for example, you will see that the kids will have, sometimes if you're in the classroom, they'll say like they have iReady time when they're actually working on their Chromebooks. So if we have a kid that's at like a level two, let's say, when they're doing their individual work, they're getting reinforcement at their level two, where the person who's sitting next to them might be at level 10, and they're actually getting support at that level. So it does allow us to do some individualized support, not just for taking those three assessments. Then teachers can use that data. This is also the program that we use to show student growth. So again, we show who's actually achieving, and then we also can show where students start and where they end up, which is what you've seen a lot at the informal work sessions, the data that's been put in front of you. So this is really what our building leadership teams are using, our district leadership team is using to measure where students are performing and what actual growth is occurring.
Right. Is it in EdgeClimber, the data that we get from iReady stuff?
Yes, it does.
And this is a three-year?
Yes.
Right? Because that's not on here, but it is a three-year renewal. So it's $453,378.85 for three years?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that showed up in the attachment, correct?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that that was what everybody's assumption is.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Any discussion? I guess, I just have one question. How do we, how does this align with O S Ts? I don't, does, does this have any sort of alignment with what the kids need to prepare for, for O S Ts?
As far as just like standards and things, yes.
You can build that into each...
It's not the same platform that the state uses for assessment, so it does look different.
But does the teacher have the ability to kind of conform that per the kid, or is it just kind of like grade, by grade level?
It has, it has a, a piece of the software that actually gives you a predictor that's attached to Ohio. Like, it can say, "This kid is predicted to be proficient," or "This kid is not predicted to be proficient." It has that piece, but it's not 100% aligned with Ohio State testing, but it is aligned with our standards. And it's one of the software programs that the state approves for us to use also in our, I think, free G R G.
Any follow-ups to that?
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Guyer? Can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes. Item 9D, this is the EdgeClimber, Renaissance EdgeClimber. Madam Superintendent.
I believe we had some discussion about it, so I don't know if you have any other questions.
I guess with the renewal, I mean, is, do we need to approve this right now, or how far are we away from not having it?
Talking about that contract, I can pull it up again.
I would assume it's ending on June 30th or... We only bring contracts forward when we're getting ready to end and start, so I don't have it in front of me.
Yeah, it's July 1st, 2024, is when it starts.
I will just also add, and again, as a person who worked in the technology department, I understand that, yes, it's difficult for some people to use, but when we keep changing programs, it puts more stress on teachers. It puts, I mean, it may not be perfect, but it's giving us the information that we need.
And we'll just keep an eye out for, I mean, three years, I don't think is a, a bad commitment, you know, for our district if we're going to keep the same things and like you said, teachers are comfortable and, you know, maybe, and do new teachers get, what kind of, do they get any personal development or?
I mean, they get a lot, so it's kind of like an overload, so they would probably need some more. But that's one of the things that we attempted to do this year was like pairing them up with a mentor at the building to kind of help with these little questions that are, are here and there.
The actual answer to that is our teachers need more professional learning on technology pieces that are not paired, they're not given paired to something that they have to go to. Because a lot of times when we do professional development, we say, "There are all these options," but then you must go to X, and then a technology piece is put in that same time slot. So we just, we need some more specific technology help for our teachers. And we have, I'm just saying, we, we have more and more technology, and, and teachers keep getting more and more and more things placed on them with less time to do any of it. And it's almost, it's almost to the point that teachers need a planning period and a technology period if we really, truly want to do justice to what we're using. I don't think we can afford that, but that's what they need.
It's only so much time in the day.
The administrative part of it, I just, it's over, I can't imagine it right now. It was just, you know, it's not just teaching, and it's, again, you're your own little CEO and the, and record keeper in your classroom, and it's, there's, I'm preaching to the choir now, but we've got to, you have to take that into consideration.
Because you don't want people doing this for you. Like, we could, you know, hire somebody and say, "Okay, across the grade level, you do third grade, or you do fourth grade or whatever," but that's not good for the teacher because they're not seeing the data.
Or the kid, because they're not, they're not interacting.
Yeah, yeah, we're not knowing what, yeah, so...
But again, if we, if we've had no issues in our, our building labor management, then...
And you, you had sent us kind of like your notes or Cliff Notes to the agenda. You had said EdgeClimber is the data software that we current, that we use to review and monitor student information current and over time. It complies data from all assessments, discipline, grades, attendance, reading improvement and monitoring plans, which is the R E M Ps. And the system is used for FastBridge, our social and behavioral screener tool. So we're using it for all those things. I mean, you stick by that right there, which is...
Yeah, so what, what happens is like, if we pull up Rocky Ratliff, that's a student. We can see Rocky's scores in iReady, we can see his score on the papers, the social-emotional. Like, it, it pulls from a lot of places and puts it into one. And I think that's what we're saying, like, it is convenient to pull, you know, and when we're looking at, at the district level, I can pull up a school, and I can, I mean, most of the time when I'm looking at it, I'm looking at the discipline, but I can see how many negative discipline incidents a school has. It gives you graphs. You can then click on the graph, and it will give you all of the students. I don't know if you saw, some of the graphs that they have had in the presentations have little, and they're up in the schools have little pictures of every kid's face that are there on the graph. So you can also use those, you know, for the kids to actually see themselves. So again, it does pull a lot of information, but it saves us a lot of time when we have to, you know, get a more comprehensive understanding of what a student is doing.
So if I'm dyslexic, it's going to be in there, it's going to be on EdgeClimber?
Well, like the R E M Ps. And, and like when the teachers meet and they do updates and things like that, like, all of those things are housed there. So again, not to say, I'm not the main user of it, but like if a parent calls in to my office and says, "Hey, I have a concern," I can easily pull up their kid and start figuring out and have conversation based on that. Or a kid who is, you know, going to Grant, who just came from GW, who transferred over, like, they can now see that kid, the history that was there, you know, at the elementary school that it does follow with them. And we have used it a lot of times in N T S S, you know, when we meet on students and we're trying to come to conclusion, it's very helpful to have it all in one place of the things that have happened according to discipline, academics, all of that, because it, it helps us see if there's patterns, or, you know, maybe something just happened that year, and it's a one-off, this kid never had issues, and then all of a sudden, you know, we're having issues. So it, again, I agree with, you know, what Board Member Swanger said. Is anything going to be perfect? No, but it is allowing us to store things in one place and be able to access the data easily.
Yeah. And if we, if we did go to something new, how would we transfer that data that we, I mean, that would be tremendous, that would be tremendous. So I don't think we can afford, I think we need to, you know, for three years, and in that span of three years, maybe Kathy can keep her, keep her eyes open for stuff.
Is that a motion?
Yeah.
It's not my job to, well.
And I think, like I said, I will take back to the team as far as if we need additional training. Again, I know we have had a couple of hiccups, but.
When I looked at it, you know, with your cheat sheet that you provided to the board, and I even emailed you, and I said, hey, I need a fake kid to walk me through this. And you said, you're so crazy, Ms. Dyer, hit on the hyperlink. Those pages, and I was like, oh, there it was. So thanks for that, that education.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
I make that motion.
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes. Motion carries on to new business, item 10, 10A. Superintendent is recommending the approval of the contract renewal for Ms. Pamela White, principal. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
I don't think I did that right. Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Abstain.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes. Contract is approved. 10B, Administrative Hire. Superintendent recommends the approval of administrative contract renewal for Paul Wheeler, Assistant Principal. Right now, he's at Harding High School.
So moved.
Have a second.
A second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
I would abstain. Item, his contract is approved. Item 10C, District Substitute Teacher/Teacher Aid/Submedia Specialist Hire. Superintendent recommends the approval of Sean Dyer to be hired for substitute teacher/teacher aid/media specialist. I would make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Abstain.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Item 10D was pulled from the agenda, so we're on to 11A, Executive Session.
Do you want to, do you want to do the Adams? We can stick her in as D.
Oh, yes, correct, that's fine. So this would be for her employment contract. Put her in as 10D, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. This is for the employment contract, and I believe a supplemental for Amanda Adams.
So moved.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
I would abstain. Item 11, Executive Session. I guess I would like to go into Executive Session. I'd make a motion to go into Executive Session on employment.
Second.
Why are we going in?
Can you call the roll on that?
Is it a state?
Oh, employment.
Number one.
Number one, and it works with Revised Code 121.22G1.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
It is 8:11. We're out of Executive Session. It's now 9:38. Drawn item 12, Amendments to Consent Agenda. A motion to pull out Courtney White out of the two places to vote on her separately. I make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I don't think we have to call the roll on that, do we? Well, we can call the roll on that. I don't think it's needed, but I think any one person could ask for a deal on that.
I don't think we need to.
All right, Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Abstain.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
And then the second item, I would pull Julie Kenny. Make a motion to pull her out of the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Can you call the roll on that?
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes. Any other amendments? Item 13, Consent Calendar, 13A would be, we'd be approving, I think, 13A, B, C. D. That's all, correct?
And J.
There's a J, too.
And J, all in one fell swoop with one vote. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes. All those contracts are approved. Moving on to the contract of Ms. White, I believe that she has two contracts that we pulled off to hear. Do I have a motion to approve her?
So moved.
I will second. Any further discussion? Can we call the roll on that, please?
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Abstain.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Her contract carries for Ms. White. The final would be the contract of Julie Kenny. She is being pulled off, and the board is amending her years of experience. I believe we had listed her as three were her arguments and presentation by Ms. Kenny. We are going to amend her years of experience. The board feels she should be credited an additional five years for a total of eight years on her years of experience. I'd make a motion to amend that, so she has eight years of experience versus what we showed was three.
Second.
Any further discussion?
President Ratliff, do we need to put on that one page the dollar amount that that's going to be with the experience?
I think, I mean, if, if people want to know, I think it's 116,201. I don't think that's some big secret. It does give her a bump in pay.
No, I mean, on the other page.
That's just on your administrative side.
Yeah, that's on the administrative side, but that's what it is. It gives her a bump in pay. You got a motion, second. Any further discussion? Can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Motion carries for her contract with the additional years. Put that back like we were done. Item 14, we just passed the, what we removed from the consent. Item 15, Board Announcements on Meetings. I know there is a, on here, and maybe we should discuss it right now while we're all here, but there's a TBD as for the July 1st meeting or informal work session. I don't know, do we have any thoughts on that? Because I think they're basically July 4th week, that there was some questions on whether we should have that or make it a different time, or just get rid of it altogether.
Had it already been scheduled at a certain location, or not?
No.
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 Just get rid of that date.
Get rid of it, yeah, yeah. That's my vote.
I think we can set another date as appropriate later if we need to.
Okay.
Do we, do we need to have an informal in July?
Well, I'm just saying, I think if we need.
Can we just have a July regular board meeting because it falls in the, on that weekend of the 4th of July?
I just think for right now, that's the way we'll have it, is we just have, and if anybody else thinks we should have an informal, whether it be administrators, they can let us know, we think you guys should have one, or one of us. I think we can just bring it to each other's attention and schedule another one later in July at a later date, because we just need the 24 hours to make it, so. So as of right now, there is no July 1st.
July 15th, right.
You good with that? 17, or 16 committee reports? Anybody have any report they want to make?
The Extracurricular Committee met earlier tonight, so if the public is interested, I can go back and watch the beginning of this or prior to. And same with curriculum, or excuse me, not curriculum, policy and personnel, which we're about to get back into a little bit.
We met Buildings and Grounds last Monday. Ms. Dyer and myself, along with Ms. Del Flora, Mr. Grau, and Mr. Kearns. Few of the things that we discussed, we passed, obviously, the water heater, some of the capital improvements that Mr. Grau's been keeping an eye on for us, ongoing discussions on the baseball diamond, and some other facility upgrades that we need to make throughout the summer. And then also, we discussed the budget that we are tracking as far as moving the district service offices into our own buildings and grounds, so looking at about $34,000 right now, estimated, right, Ms. Dyer? Right? As, as what Mr. Grau has calculated for that move here before the end of that lease. And I think that is about it on that. You have anything to add, Ms. Dyer?
Anything you guys want to discuss on credit and our finance?
We already had our finance.
Yes, okay.
We did finance earlier, so.
Quit to pass that, we had that.
All right.
We'd already heard it, that's why we, sorry. Let's the rest of you in.
Yeah. Item 17 is the first reading, I believe, correct, of the policies and procedures. I think the only one that I was interested in, maybe further discussion, or you guys can come back, maybe meeting two, was the, I think it's the first one, 2623. I think we have like notification by mail or certified mail, and as an alternative email or electronic, as long as we can prove that they're serviced, maybe we should, to save time and money, to do the email option first in there, and alternatively, if they're not getting that form of communication, send the mail. So that would, the first option would be electronic, because obviously it's faster and instantaneous, and if we could prove service, then maybe second option would be, okay, they didn't get that, now we got to mail it. But that's the only one I see. Because you might be making a lot of mailing certified in the event that that's our first option, is all I'm thinking. So something to consider, but other than that, I thought everything else looked pretty good. Plus, I think everybody got Mr. Wibling, because we put that on the agenda, doesn't have a number as of right now, but his cell phones and listening devices, and I think it's just a first proposal, so we can come back and further do that. And I think Mr. DeWine is kind of the governor, I think Mr. Wibling, myself, has talked about cell phones for quite some time, but I think Mr. DeWine is now, came out saying every school should consider having a.
He did a good job of explaining it.
Policy, yeah.
The Ohio General Assembly actually passed it, and he signed it.
Okay.
So, let's just give the Ohio General Assembly.
Some credit.
I mean, and the fact that they voted unanimously on it was.
Yeah.
If you get the Ohio General Assembly to unanimously vote on anything, that's significant.
The only thing I would like, and I always say this, is like, is it possible to like even let Neola look at this, or, you know, I mean, is it, is that a difficult thing, or even legal? I mean, I just want it, I'm, it's nice, clean language in here and stuff, but this is a first one, right, stop?
Yeah, absolutely. And it's a draft, and I'll be completely honest about that. It was very much based on what the Akron Public Schools, and I still can't remember the, the district in Florida, but theirs is posted on their, their school district policies.
You're just saying that was the background.
That was the, a loose template, if you will, and, yeah.
Well, the, the due's going to come out with a, with one also, I mean, soon.
Well, yeah, whenever that is.
So who knows how soon, soon is. But in terms of just getting a chance to look at that, I mean, I'm not saying we have to accept that, but we could draft that around what we want. I just know, I, I am thankful to the Ohio General Assembly for actually passing this, and for Governor DeWine signing it, so that it gives us a little bit more leverage to say, this isn't just something that Marion City Schools is doing, this is something that the Ohio Legislature said, and the governor says. So it just gives it more weight.
And I would also encourage the community, staff, administration, whomever, if you have your own thoughts about it, you know, come to the next board meeting or two and, and let us know. This, it's coming, so we're going to have to do something.
Right. And I can say that when I was teaching at Tri-Rivers, I, I was told by an administrator that I could not take cell phones away from children, so we, I created my own pouch with a two-inch piece of Velcro on it, so that if they opened it, we could hear it. And my students hated my guts for the first week. And when I say hated my guts, I mean hated my guts for the first week. The second week that they came back to school, they were actually thanking me and saying, thank you. We didn't realize how distracted we really were. And now that we don't have them, we realize how much we can pay attention, and the rest